Good evening. It is six o'clock PM on the news. Today is Wednesday, January 19th. And we do have a quorum of the entire board for the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Board, a number one board meeting. And again, we do have a quorum. Citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the presiding, or the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form. That includes the topics of your statement and your name. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Ms. Laurie, any citizens' comments?
Sure.
Reports and updates, item one, staff reports. Alan.
Good evening, directors. Not too much to report this evening. The waterline interconnect project is continuing on. We're about 36% complete on the installation of that project. Due to the holidays, they were moving pretty slow. They made some connections this month and finished up a little bit of grubbing. Here in a couple of weeks, they're going to start saw cutting the concrete behind the apartment complex. And once they get through that section, they'll be moving on pretty quick and working towards town hall and then over towards the elevated storage tower itself. So no alarm to be concerned. We're still within our parameters of the contract as long as we have decent and fair weather. We don't see any kind of major issues coming up. Our waterline, annual waterline rehab project is still in design. Lift station one is still in design. I reviewed some preliminary plans on that this week. Our MBR piping project, we also have a draft of the tech memo that we got this month as well. So those are still on pace to be, receive the final plans in February and anticipate advertising for those projects in March and bringing them to the board for approval in April, hopefully beginning construction in May. One other thing I wanted to discuss, I was posed with a question yesterday of whether or not the board could apply for ARPA funds. So I asked Tony to provide, or be able to provide you all with a little bit of input on that. So here's a handout of what Tony sent me. And Tony, if you don't mind, can you explain to the board or answer that question of whether or not the board can apply for ARPA funding, please?
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, good evening. In its infinite wisdom, the Department of Treasury identified the local governments that would be entitled to direct funding from the central government with the ARPA monies. They've adopted interim rules and guidance. And it's very difficult reading, but my belief is that those interim guidance and rules provide that what are called units of local government generally, units of local government with general powers are entitled to direct funding from, with the ARPA monies, which would include counties and municipalities. A water district is a special district for most local government. And they are not included within the definition of the general purpose local governments and specifically excluded by the guidance from, that's been promulgated by the Department of Treasury. With respect to funding, that just means you can't get funding directly from the federal government, but that doesn't preclude you from seeking funding from those entities that do receive direct funding. So there's many counties in the state who received a lot of money and local governments, special purpose governments such as districts are reaching out to those counties or in some cases municipalities and asking for funding. Because water and sewer infrastructure projects are eligible for funding, it's just that the special purpose local governments are not eligible for direct funding from the government. So in order for the mud to receive funding, unlike the town of Trophy Club, you would have to make an application to the town or to the local county. And whether or not they, and how they disperse those ARPA funds that they receive directly is within the discretion of those governing bodies. But you are not eligible for direct funding directly from the federal government.
Tony, I was the one that asked the question because there's some muds in the South that are getting ARPA funds and whether they're going through the avenues that you just mentioned, I have no idea. It's kind of like the COVID money. We were told, or you know, it was determined that we weren't eligible, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, Kevin, and if you know those names, I'm happy to look into it. But sitting here today, my thought would be that it's very, very likely they reached out to the local counties who are able to disperse those ARPA funds to those districts. It's just that we can't get direct funding from the government.
I'll send you a list. I also called AWBD and they said, and again, the person I talked to, I don't know how knowledgeable she is, but she said that they had some muds participating in that, too.
They'd be a good source of information, frankly. So that's interesting to me. So I'm happy to follow up with you on that.
Anytime you can get money like that, might as well, you know, turn over every rock you can trying to get it.
Absolutely. And there's other programs that are obviously out there. But again, my understanding with respect to ARPA is that districts cannot get that directly and they have to go through another local government to be entitled to those funds.
I'll get you those names. Thanks for the research.
Sure.
Bill?
I had a question. I know that there was work being done on, I think it's well number one, along 114.
Yes, sir.
I think that work's complete. What did, what did we find? What did we do?
So what happened was the pump failed. And so when our well contractor pulled that pump, it was discovered through downhole inspection that it needed to be cleaned severely. And so while they were waiting for the pump to come in, they went ahead and went in there and they scrubbed that well out and removed a fair amount of silt and debris from the well screen itself. It was put back into place and it's been operable for two, three weeks now?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay.
Okay.
That's what that was. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I don't know if y'all noticed, when you drive by there as well, some pretty silver insulation on that as well. We were going ahead and taking some proactive measures on our wellheads and also some piping out at the wastewater treatment plant that froze during the freeze last year. We went ahead and added some heat tracing wire and added some additional insulation. So everything that we had an issue with, we shouldn't have any issues with. Everything's.
Put a curse on us.
Don't, don't say that. Don't say that. We hope we don't get out of the twenties this year, right?
Other questions about staff reports? Thank you, Alan.
I just, one thing, I saw that water usage, water pumped actually went up. Is that right, Mike? Like from 49 or something, 48 to 54?
Yeah, well, both pumped and drilled.
What the heck happened to winter averaging?
Yeah, I noticed that also.
Yeah.
Okay. Item two, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Two, consider an act to approve the consent agenda. A, December 2021 combined financials. B, December 14, 2021 regular meeting minutes. C, quarterly investment report, first quarter fiscal year 2022. And D, tax collections report, first quarter fiscal year 2022. Some way like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Okay.
A, B, C, and D.
A, B, C, and D. Kevin has the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Kelly seconds. Motion by Kevin, seconded by Kelly. Further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Regular session, item three, receive an update from the audit committee. Who's taking the lead on that? Is that? Mr. Rose?
We had a Zoom type meeting with the auditor and with Stephen and the general manager, myself and Kelly. I'm going to sugarcoat my words. I was less than impressed with the, with the event. We can start with the fact that I did not get the 58-page audit until 15 minutes before the meeting. Stephen didn't get it until 20 minutes before the meeting, which completely negates any possibility of previewing it and having a reasonable discussion about the audit during the meeting. Following the meeting, I went through, went through the audit. I found a page in the audit that was from another entity, wasn't ours, a page that would be filed with TCEQ. I will say very softly, I'm less than impressed with, with what I found. And when I find things like that in a document coming from an auditor, it immediately raises red flags in my mind about the quality of the remaining audit. And I depend upon staff for that type of input. The inputs that I receive indicated that the audit process was less than organized, that there was some questions concerning the qualifications of those doing the audit was not at the level of the previous year. So based on those, what I've said here, there, I can, I could go into more detail, but I will not at this point. I'm going to suggest that if staff worked with the auditing company, if they're unable to get a satisfactory indication that we can get, that the audit company can get these type of issues resolved before next year, that we should be considering finding another audit firm. I know I found out today that this particular audit packet that we have here required a second request, that the request, that the audit that was submitted to us for our organization was for the town of Heiko. So that just gives you some idea of the level of what I saw. And like I said, I'm not impressed.
And I would like to add clarity that staff requested numerous times in advance for copies prior to the audit so we could get to the committee in advance. So it was not out of a lack of trying by staff. Just want to make sure that that's clear.
So can you comment, maybe it's Stephen further about the audit process itself? Obviously, the end result was not desirable, certainly. But maybe you can give us some commentary on the whole process itself.
Good afternoon, evening here. What I want to talk about is, you know, there was some turnover from the prior year. We had a different auditing manager who left the firm for CLA. We were given a new principal this year, and I'll introduce her in a minute here in this next section, who is more local here. So she was going to help out because the last principal we had was out of state. And then we had some turnover. I believe there was three different employees from CLA that were designated to our account, designated to our audit, that wound up switching out before the audit was completed. And we were giving another gentleman here as our manager towards the end of the audit, or I'm sorry, towards the middle while the auditors were here in sight. And, you know, we worked with him and trying to get him up to speed with our organization, how we handle things and how our audit is here. So it was not as organized as it has been in prior years. There has been a lot of back and forth, trying to get things cleaned up and trying to get everything, you know, up to speed on their end to find out so that we can close our audit here.
Sounds disappointing, at least to me, that in some ways you, it sounds like you were more the training ground for them about how the operations run here, you know, kind of midstream or three quarters of the way through, which is, I mean, that's just unacceptable, in my view.
What type of feeling do we have that the audit's correct? I mean, a company that is, is an auditor for the muds should be familiar with our business so they can see things that are wrong or right. And from what Bill said and what, you know, I've heard, it's like, I don't get a warm fuzzy, this is a good audit.
So there is, you know, as Bill said, there was some stuff in there that we did change towards the end there. But for the most part, that, you know, we did have a conversion last year, if everybody remembers, that we used to go off of a government-wide financials and would try to move to, or enterprise. So there are some changes there that they were trying to get to speed for. And then there were some, trying to understand how things were done last year as far as the notes and what they had and trying to make sure we duplicated this year. So I reviewed the audit. Bottom line, everything looks good on the audit there after the corrections and after everything we have as of now.
But the, the purpose of the audit is for someone else to do the check and balance. I mean, I have every bit of faith in you, but that's the purpose of the audit, is to check the numbers and make sure all the procedures and everything are done correctly. And it sounds like this firm had no idea what was going on. They just boiler plated it and then they threw a bonus page in there for Bill to look at. So I don't know.
There's, in, in the audit, there is a stapled together copy and it talks about significant deficiency. And if you like to look at finding 20, 21.1, I took strong exception to the draft significant deficiency finding because what we do as far as booking some of our accounts are allowed. The way we do it is allowed. They attempted to say that that's a significant deficiency and I, and I objected to it.
Just putting wood on the fire, what I just said.
Yeah. And, and so I suggested a change in verbiage. So you find, you find under, on this page, it says a significant deficiency, deficiency or combination deficiencies. But I, they moved a little bit different from where I was. But you start out, it's a significant deficiency finding is, as allowed by the AICPA and the U.S. Government Accountability Office, management relied on an auditing firm to prepare, prepare several closing entries. That's the way the mud has done it for years, especially dealing with pensions. We have the auditor make those calculations and enter, enter it. It's allowed. They attempted to say, no, we're going to tag you with a sufficient deficiency. And I said, I don't think so. And so now you have something that says here that says, this is allowed and we're going to call it a significant deficiency. Well, you can do that, but now it's explained on the document. And so when somebody looks at it, they can say, well, wait a minute. I question what you've done. So you question what the auditor's done. I, it, it just, you know.
Sounds like we spent a lot of time auditing the audit.
Yeah. And how, and again, what kind of, you know, confidence do we have that it's correct? And then, you know, usually they come in front of the board for any questions or anything. Is that not happening this year?
They're, they're on.
They'll be online.
They're on their way?
They're on Zoom.
Yeah.
They're on right now.
Are they listening to this stuff?
Yes.
Do they have any response?
They're fixing to give a presentation, so I'm sure that they.
Okay. I mean, I, I just don't have a good feeling that this was done correctly.
Okay, so to answer your concern, because I spoke to the finance manager about that. I said, because I was considering taking a different type of action. But my concern is, is he, is staff comfortable with what we have before us, that it accurately reflects our, our situation? And the answer was yes. So based on that, I, based on staff, I can accept the audit. But the process I found severely lacking.
Well, you said some of the verbiage in it you didn't agree with, too, so.
Well, that's been, that's been changed, that the verbiage is.
And the verbiage that he saw was also a draft.
Yeah.
So that, the verb, the draft that we see tonight was a revised version.
Point being, the auditors are supposed to double check the staff. I mean, if they don't do it, this, you know, and again, I have every bit of confidence in Stephen, but if the staff, they did it, of course, it's going to look great to them. And the auditors are there to find, you know, things that weren't done. I, I, I mean, we can go forward with it, I just don't have any confidence in it.
Yeah.
That's me.
Similar type boat. When I, when I found the one, the one-page document, the TSI, TSI dash one, that was clearly from a different municipality, that was, that's time, time to shut the lock.
People don't know our business, that's the first flag that goes up. When they start throwing bonus pages in and putting statements that aren't true in there, that should be, hey, we're done. We need to get someone else in here.
Yeah. So that, that's my report.
Okay, so I'm going to hold some commentary because the next item leads right into their presentation. Item four, consider an act to accept fiscal year 2021 audit report as prepared by Clifton Larson Allen LLP. I'm not sure who is on point, Stephen, who's on point for them?
I have Baki here. Baki is our principal who did the audit here. And I have also Roy, who's our auditing manager.
Gentlemen, you are up. Oh, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Stephen, I think you had, were you, did you just want me to run through the slides? Did everyone have hard copies or?
Yes, give me one second here.
Okay. I have them up on my end, so I can run through them as well. So while we pull that up, just to respond to some of the conversation, we do understand and we, we appreciate the board having a conversation and to be involved in the process. And we do appreciate that. We did have staff turnover on our end, as many firms are feeling right now. So we did have on our end, we did have some turnover and some timing issues. So we did experience that this year. As for the financial statements, I feel confident, I stand behind them. I've been doing this for a long time. There were some issues that were honestly there last year. A lot of changes that we made because they have not been historically presented correctly. So there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of change, a lot of updates that were made. And so it caused a little bit of that delay as well. So I, I do stand behind those financial statements, as I mentioned. You'll see certain things, just for example, as I go through these, one of the issues that we noted that's been historically reported incorrectly were the deferred inflows and outflows for your pension and OPEB that I'll talk about here in a little bit. It's been calculated incorrectly and it's that reliance on the audit firm. So I'll go through that a little bit, but we did make those corrections this year based on current auditing standards and based on the GASB to make sure that those are correct this year. So, but I really want to, what I want to do today is really go over the audit results and where we ended up and the operations of the mud. And so everyone can kind of see where, where we're ending up for this year. So this is our audit presentation. We are wrapped up with the audit. I believe everybody's received issued financial statements, so you should have this in hand. If we can get to the next slide here. And I didn't quite introduce myself. Stephen did a quick introduction, but my name is Bakti Patel. As you mentioned, I did take over as engagement principal this year. Chris Knopik has been your principal in the past. He is based out of Minnesota. I, I live in Austin, Texas, taken over that. I've done government audits my entire almost 20-year career now, from East Coast to West Coast, worked with large entities, small entities, special districts, cities, counties, governments. With me is Roy Cobb also. He is a state and local manager on my team. He's also been in his, in state and local government his entire career as well. Both of us previously worked at a big four firm as well, so we come a little bit from the same background there. So our agenda, I just want to quickly go through, did our introductions here, I'll go through some required communications we all required to make with the board. I'll run through our audit results for this year, including the finding that was noted earlier. I'll go through the financial reports, the financial results, just to walk you through what happened this year from a financial perspective and then go over any key issues and summary at the end, just sort of high level. So, next slide, please. So did the introduction to here is Bakti Patel. As I mentioned, I took over this year as engagement principal. We did have some turnover. Roy Cobb was our manager on this audit. So and then with him were Donna Gonzalez and Han Fu, who were on site during the weeks that we were doing the audit to look at audit doc, to look at supporting documentation, go through invoices, payables, things like that. So Donna Gonzalez and Han were there, working during field work. Next slide, please. So some of our required communications, and these are communications we are, we're required to make with those charged with governance, with the board. We talk about the accounting policies. The accounting policies are outlined in note one to this financial statement that you have. We didn't note any unusual transactions this year, anything that needed to be pointed out in that footnote. There was no new accounting policies adopted during fiscal '21. There were two new GASB standards, GASB 84 and GASB 90. We've looked at both of them, neither of them impacted the entity. GASB 84 is related to fiduciary activities and GASB 90 is associated, it's related to majority equity interest. And neither of those impacted the district this year, so nothing to disclose there in note one. We do look at accounting estimates, with these being estimates, they're not exact tie one-to-one to an invoice type of transaction. So these are the estimates that we identify. We made sure that they looked reasonable based on whether it's historical basis or in case of depreciation expense, based on the lives of capital assets. We looked at allowance for doubtful accounts. Those are obviously based on historical basis. Make sure that that looks still, that still looked correct this year. And then net pension liability and net OPEB liability are based on actuarial results. So we do look at that actuary report, make sure that those assumptions look okay compared to industry standards and those liabilities look okay. So those are areas that we, we looked at a little bit deeper as part of our audit. Next slide, please. The financial statement disclosures, you'll see, I believe, they start on page, I can't remember the page number here, I don't have it in front of me, but they are all complete and clear. And I believe there was note one through seven on there. We didn't identify any sensitive disclosures in there that might have any sensitive information. They were pretty standard disclosures, all complete and clear. As I mentioned, we did make changes this year. There were, especially on that OPEB footnote, there were quite a few required disclosures missing from there. So if you, if you come here, here over here, you'll see some changes in there, just some additional information that wasn't in there prior. So we did get that updated using checklist and we go through a second review as well. And so those, those notes have been updated. Difficulties encountered? We didn't, we didn't have any difficulties and Stephen was able to provide information to us, give, give us responses to any of our questions on a timely manner. Uncorrected statements, sometimes we'll have proposed audit adjustments and whether they're not material, whether management disagrees with them. Sometimes they sit on the schedule, we call it incorrect, a schedule of uncorrected statements, where we don't think they're material enough to be to book on the financial statements, but we agree that they probably should be, but they'll sit on this other schedule. We didn't have any of those there. So anything that we identified or we discussed are reflected in those financial statements that you have there. Corrected statements, these are areas that we identified that were not in the trial balance as already booked, that we, the unadjusted trial balance that we received. As I mentioned, we reported those pension and OPEB activities in there. Those were not already recorded in there. Management historically relied on the audit firm to do that, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here. So those weren't booked in those, in the unadjusted trial balance. They are in those financials that you have with you now, those have been reported. And those are my miscellaneous entries for financial statement purposes. And we don't expect those to be booked in the trial balance. Those can be part of the financial statement preparation. We didn't have any disagreements with management around any accounting policies and we are not aware of any consultations that managements have with other consultants around any accounting matters either. And we didn't have any significant specia's made prior to our engagement either. Our engagement is independent, it's not biased. So this is completely independent audit. We did have one finding, as was mentioned earlier, on our internal control letter. This finding is in a separate letter to those charged with governance, and I'll talk about that here on the next slide. I think that looks like. So just for a little context, before I go into it, when we do our audit, any findings that we have any internal control issues we identify really falls into three buckets. On one end of the extreme is internal control deficiencies. Those are minor deficiencies we identify and we'll communicate those directly to management. We don't think they're material or big enough to, to bring those to your attention as the board and communicate those to you. There were small things, we've discussed those with management. We've already put some corrective action into place on how we can, we can, we can have some best practices there. on how we can, we can, we can have some best practices there, but nothing that we feel that needs to come to your attention. On the other extreme are material weaknesses, where we feel there's, there's a reasonable possibility that there is a material misstatement on those financial statements. Those are very serious, and so those would be communicated here, those would be likely reflected in our audit opinion depending on the severity. So that's the other extreme. Sort of in the middle of these significant deficiencies, the threshold there, and the wording sounds harsh, but the threshold there is that this is just something we feel that we need to bring to the board's attention. It doesn't impact our audit opinion, it doesn't go into the financial statements, it's a separate letter to the board that we feel that this is something that we want to communicate to the board, and we feel the board should know. And so that's really the threshold for the significant deficiency. So if we move to the next slide, I can talk about that a little bit more. So this was noted as finding twenty-one-one. As you can see, as was mentioned earlier, we are, as auditors, allowed to propose audit adjustments, things that we find are already in the fight, already in the trial balance. Now it is up to management whether they agree with those, they feel that those calculations are accurate, and ultimately take responsibility for those adjustments. So as part of it, as I mentioned, management's historically relied on the audit firm to book these pension and OPEB entries. I believe there was some more in the past as well, that management relied on the audit, but I believe management's taken over quite a few of them actually, so these are just a few that are left. And this is, I believe there was a finding noted last year as well around this. It might have been noted a little bit differently, but it was the same, essentially the same concept. So, the net pension, OPEB liability, so while we as auditors are allowed to take the data given to us and post the entries, it's really an exercise of, administrative exercise of posting those entries. We shouldn't be calculating what should be in those numbers, because then we turn around and audit those numbers, right? And so that's really where the reliance comes into play. Now, from a posting the entry perspective, we put those financials together, we are allowed to do that under yellow book standards, and we will continue to do that. So, in that second paragraph here, one of the things we do is convert the governmental fund activities, which is how the trial balance is reported, which is fine, into our full accrual financials, which you see in front of you here. I think Stephen mentioned that there was a transition, I believe, last year, it was last year, to convert those. And so, we could still do those conversion entries, again, we're literally just taking dollars from that are already reported and putting them into different buckets. Those do not impact your net position, those do not impact your net income, the entries for the pension and OPEB do. And so that's really where the, we feel it warrants the, it merits your attention to let you know that we as an audit firm are calculating those and booking those, but they are still management's financial statements, so we, we cannot take any responsibility for the accuracy of those entries being posted. So, one of the, the recommendation we do have is, management just train staff to take over some of those entries, and so we as auditor can come in and look at those entries as posted by management, as opposed to calculating and then turning back around and auditing them, because they are management's entries. What we do, just so we can maintain our independence, is that those entries are given to management, and management does review them to make sure that they agree with them. These auditors are not allowed to post anything to your financials without full agreement from management. So, I guess I want to pause there to see if there are any questions. I know there was some discussion on this earlier, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Is there more that you're going to talk about, or?
There is, I just want to pause there then. Okay. So, just from an audit opinion standpoint, our audit opinion is still an unvalued bet opinion, it's the highest level of assurance we can give. We are saying that is a clean audit opinion, for lack of better words. This is simply a letter to those charged with governance that we feel, we feel we need to bring it to your attention as something that we'd like, we, we think that could have some corrective action going forward. Okay, next slide. So just some financial highlights here, move my screen so I can see this. These are just from an operations perspective, what happened in 2021. So, revenues increased about two percent, and usage increased, and then we saw a comparable increase in expenditures about five percent, mainly in that repairs and maintenance category. So as you can see, the top blue line and the top red line there, they stay pretty, pretty consistent with each other. So revenues, expenses sort of went up with each other there. The bottom two lines, the, the third turquoise line there, you see there's a change in that position. You see that stayed pretty consistent from year to year, so a pretty stable year overall. Net non-operating revenues, and that's the green line at the bottom there, those increased due to the increase, or those actually increased due to the decrease in interest expense. So, this is all your non-operating revenues netted together, with no new debt, and as interest expenses going down, that number actually increased for the net non-operating revenues. Next slide. From a cash perspective, this shows your.
Hit the small button so we can get rid of the picture there. Now I'm the inset, up to the left, to the right, all the way, yeah, hit the small, that, that one right there. There, thank you.
So from a cash perspective, what we present on those financial statements are unrestricted cash and restricted cash. Restricted cash is primarily restricted for those debt payments and for the debt that the MUD does have. So unrestricted cash went up about, it went up primarily due to $2.6 million in net income this year. So, obviously more revenue, more cash, we saw a comparable increase in that cash. The restricted cash did go down, the restrictions, like I said, mainly due to the debt. So as those debt payments get paid down, we'll see less and less restricted cash. And we see that restricted cash being moved into unrestricted to make those debt payments. So, obviously we can see more restricted cash if there was more debt, but as that debt gets paid down, that, that moves into unrestricted to pay those liabilities. Next slide. This is a snapshot of your trade AR, this stayed pretty consistent as well for year over year. So trade our AR is up about $62,000 or five percent over 2020, so what a huge swing there. Sales increased about $192,000, about two percent over 2020. But the collection rate stayed relatively flat, so we were looking at about fifty-one days for accounts in AR last year, and this year was about fifty-two days, so overall, pretty, a pretty flat collection rate. Next slide. These are your debt service payments over the life of the remaining debt. As you know, there was no new debt this year taken, taken in. So, this shows your debt payments, you see they, they kind of swing down, so this should stay pretty consistent unless the MUD issues new debt, and so that would change that. But as you can see that, the debt service payments will go down over the years, as well as that interest payment as it's related to the principal amount. Next slide. So in summary, overall, a pretty healthy, stable year, and very comparable to last year. Overall net income was about $2.7 million this year. And the, there's a positive net position balance, which is your equity balance, for lack of better words, of $35.8 million as of year-end. And total cash balance was $6.2 million at year-end. And the net cash provided from your operating activities, so this is stripping out those property taxes, most fire, expire apartment expenses and all of that, just from really your water usage and your operating expenses, from that, it was $2.6 million. So, overall, it's healthy, the MUD continues to be financially healthy, continues to sustain operations through, sustain its, it's, sustain its health through its operations without the, without needing the non-operating revenue there. So, as I mentioned, overall, unmodified opinion, it's a cleanest, it's the highest level of assurance we can give. We feel the financials are accurately stated, outside of the one area of improvement from a financial statement perspective. Nothing materially missing in those financial statements. So, that's really it, overall, a healthy year, I think so. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have a, a question, Baki. So, I want to go back to comments that were made earlier from Bill, Director Rose, about the audit itself. Some of the paperwork being incorrect, incorrect reference even to, not even the MUD. The documentation that wasn't given to these folks here until right before the review. So, I guess I'd like your position on that, and I, all I really heard was, well, we've had a little turnover, but it's really kind of unacceptable practice in our view, so I'd like you to address that.
Right. There were, there were delays, I, you know, I won't, I, I understand that. I took over as engagement principal well after, we should have done interim work, again, not the MUD's problem, that was on our end. So I will, I, I will take full responsibility for that, we had turnover, we got started later. Just to fall out of from everything that happened this year internally, from a, from a financial statement perspective, we did make quite a few changes on those financial statements this year. If you look at last year and this year, we did do a run-through of those. And for me, it goes back to the reliance on the auditors putting all of that together. So we did do a very detailed thorough review. The schedule that was in there, I believe that was in there last year as well. Those are unaudited schedules, we don't audit those schedules, we take what's given to us and we put those in there, so that was in there last year. You know, maybe it was my mistake, maybe it should, it should have taken out, but it wasn't in there last year. So, I do apologize for that, I probably should have caught that, but I assume since it was in there last year and management had given that, then that should be the same information in there this year. Again, those are unaudited, we don't really ask for all support for that, those TSI schedules for TCEQ. So we did take that out after Stephen noted that, but I think it has historically been in your financial statement. So, this wasn't accidentally added in this year, it's continued to stay in those financial statements. I know there was a, there was a comment on some financial statements incorrectly being sent. It wasn't a mix-up, it was somebody, it was someone else's financial statements, our administrative assistant put the wrong address on the UPS label. It wasn't a mix-up, the MUD's financial statements did not go anywhere else, I was still getting those printed, so not a mix-up for the MUD anyway, I, I mean, that wasn't the case. So those did accidentally get delivered to the MUD, but that was because one of our administrative assistants put the wrong address on there. But yours did not go anywhere else. That was run on the client altogether, there for their board meeting. You know, as far as the finding itself, and as I mentioned, the significant deficiency threshold for that is something that we want to discuss with you. We as an audit firm think that we need to talk to you about the board. Again, as I mentioned, there were several other management alert comments that we spoke to management about, that, you know, we should, we should try to clean this up, that, you know, it could get, it could rise the level of the significant deficiency we want to discuss with the board, but they weren't that big a deal. This one, if we had not called it a significant deficiency, it wouldn't be something we'd be discussing with you here at all. And us finding errors and how those deferred inflows and outflows are post, are recorded, as well as how that restricted net position, there was accrued interest wasn't taken out of there. There were some changes that were made this year because they were just not done incorrectly in the past, or they weren't done correctly in the past. So, like I said, we did a very thorough review of those financial statements, which did cause a little bit more of the delay, especially on the tail end.
Who else?
Bill, how much time did you spend looking over this audit?
This particular one here?
Yeah.
I, we just delivered it this evening.
You haven't looked at it?
No. I haven't, you know, it's, it, I don't know what time it came in.
How many other MUDs do you do audits for?
As a firm?
Yes.
I'm not sure, we, we do quite a few, but I, I could give you that number, I don't know off the top of my head, I apologize. We, we are a national firm, we have over 120 offices in the US, so we do a lot nationally.
MUDs aren't in every state, so, you know, you can say you're national, I appreciate that, but there aren't MUDs in every state across the US.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just don't know how many that we do. I personally have two as engagement principal, but we, like I said, we do others from a national perspective, but I don't know that number.
Well, any other questions or comments? I'll, I'll just finish with one last comment. I'm disappointed in the quality of the delivery of the material, you know, just getting here just now, some things being wrong. I, I get what you're saying about, you know, our information didn't go anywhere else. I guess what I was looking for is, you know, an apology saying, hey, this wasn't our best effort. And as we look into next year about who we're going to use for an audit, you know, that's a concern, at least to me.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I will move to accept the fiscal year 2021 annual audit report prepared by Clifton Larson Allen LLP.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Kelly seconds. Motion by Bill to accept the audit as presented, seconded by Kelly.
Hold on. Yeah, I just have a question. Kelly, did you look at this? I know you're on the committee too, is that correct? So you didn't look at it either?
No, I just got it when I got here as well.
We can call for a vote, I, I just can't approve it because no one knows the condition of it.
I, and I, and I base, and I base my action on, on staff.
No, but that's what the auditors are for.
I know, I, I get that, I get that.
I spend a lot of time with Stephen, so I understand all this.
Again, I don't have any problem with Stephen, but the auditors are to check him, you know, or check the staff and check the procedures. So, it's like giving the fox the key to the chicken house, I mean, come on.
Okay, so we have the motion in front of us, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
I'm on the same page as you.
Motion passes three to two.
That's crazy, we're voting for things that we don't know.
Item number five. Consider an act to approve a proposal by DAC DAC Incorporated for replacement of the security system at all fire station entry points for an amount not to exceed $21,061.31, and authorize general manager to execute the necessary contract documents.
Directors, the reason this is being brought to you tonight, obviously it's less than 25,000, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because town staff and I have had this discussion about this being a potential replacement item in the upcoming budget process. However, for you all to know and understand, this, the security access system in the fire station was installed in 2011. This last year, they have had repeated issues with that system failing. The software is, reached its useful life, it is no longer supported, and their IT consultant has been able to make some Band-Aid efforts to keep their site secure. So what I wanted to do is bring this to your attention. There is a potential that by making this purchase now, we can still absorb this unbudgeted expense during the true-up, but I wanted to bring it to you all's attention and make sure that you are aware of it. In the event that we have to use reserve funds to cover this expense, you all approved it and understood and accepted it.
Okay, questions?
By any chance, I've noticed that this is the same system that's being used by the Toronto Trophy Club right now, City Hall?
That's correct.
Is this system going to tie in to the Toronto Trophy Clubs, what we're talking about now, it's going to be shared services?
That's correct. Since they see oversee operations, they would be overseeing this system as well.
Okay, so was the overriding, I don't want to say it, the decision to go with this system because of the Toronto Trophy Club, or did we do different bids with different companies?
This is a.
Because it matches town?
This is part of the town's system, and since the town oversees operations, it's recommended to go this way because my understanding is that it's been a standalone system all on its own.
The current one.
Correct. And the intent was for full operations to, to, to be able to be utilized by the town staff since they oversee and operate that facility itself. It was the intent to have them, have this facility be brought under the umbrella of the town's IT personnel, yes.
And I just wanted to know why this was chosen versus other.
It'll, it'll be added on to, if you will.
When you talk about the town's security system, you're talking about the upgraded system? Because when they first opened that building, they had horrible security issues as far as the card readers. Anyone can make a copy of the card reader and go through the doors.
And I believe this is an updated, this will be an updated version that will be similar to what they have at other town facilities.
Okay, is the, is the town contributing any money to this system?
That's completely up to your discretion.
Well, I think they should, they have EMS operation there, correct?
I think it depends on how you look at it, with it.
Going in the building, but.
Correct.
They, they have EMS, they have, you know, chips in the pot, as far as.
Understood, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight and let you all discuss it.
They have access to all these funds and we don't.
Chief, do you have any observations or comments on this?
Nothing more than, General Manager Formantin's added there, he touched on all those points. It's an archaic system, it is a Band-Aid approach right now. We've added some solenoids that we bought that are getting us through right now. We had eight to ten doors down for about a month during December after Thanksgiving. We have no way to know who has access. We have no way to know who has access, what limited access is available out there. For instance, our volunteers, the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteer Association, other staff members in town that need to be, for instance, we have narcotics rooms. There are certain rooms that only our personnel need to go. We don't have full control of that. That software doesn't allow us the opportunity to put those limitations on there. And so, it puts us at some, quite a bit of risk there. And with the situations that we've had recently in Flower Mound, had someone walk into a station and had pulled a gun, shot a fire engine. Fortunately, no one was hurt, but that hit really close to home with us. And that was about, not long after that is when we lost our total security. So, it's something we're very concerned about. Having this be a, it's a, it's a system that's proprietary with what the town already has. So, being basically an add-on, it's not a new system. So, that allows it to be done for a lot less money, so to speak. But they'll be able to control that with that same software that they have in place now at town. And the system they have in place at town, I think they did have initial system when they built that building, but this is not the same system. This one they have no issues with, yes, sir.
Do you see any possibility the town, you know, participating in this, in the EMS side?
I don't know, no, sir.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, right? I don't disagree that the security needs to be upgraded. If it's 2011, many things have changed and things have worn out, as you said. But I'd also like to put in the town's court to see if they have anything they can donate, especially since they have access to grants that we don't.
I do have a question. Would the town be able to override you, or do you keep control of it? Now, I know it's being added into their system, but who has ultimate control of your environment?
Well, the town, Matt Cox, who is our building supervisor over there, runs that software. However, I have total control over who has what limitations, so that would be my say. So, I had, and that's what I really need to have, is a comprehensive list of knowing who has access and what type of access they have. Have that control.
Okay. Yeah, considering, we're talking about narcotics and things like that. I really don't want it outside of your-
Yes, sir. That's absolutely my discretion. That would be a list that I would provide, and no one would be added or taken off unless I had that say. That part I'll be adamant about. Yes, sir.
Chief, I've, when I looked at the contract, there are several things that are not included in this amount. Talks about coring doors, ceiling panels, cards, access cards. Do you have any idea whether we're gonna be into that arena of re-coring doors? Or whether this cost is gonna be close to adequate?
This cost, I came out and did an onsite-
Okay.
Assessment, and everything should be included in there. The, the doors are already cored for the system that we have now. So, basically, they'll be running those, those, those areas that are already in place.
Okay.
So, they feel confident, confident there'll be minor adjustments, but nothing major in that regard.
A direct replacement then, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you talk about the financing once again? You talked about true-up funds. What about, do we have any reserves or GASB that might be dedicated to this particular area?
We don't have any GASB. What we do have reserve funding available, if, if you all would like to go ahead and allocate those monies now. We haven't finalized the true-up with the town yet on last year's budget. But my understanding is that there still should be a surplus back to the district.
Okay, what's the reserve status? What's-
Stephen, what's the cash balance we have, please?
Well, one way or another, it's gonna, it's gonna net out, right? When you net out the, the true-up.
Maybe not.
Well, the true-up would be for last year, and as far as the projection, we should be getting a true-up higher than what this amount is here. That's just projection for the town. Until they finish their audit, we don't have the answer for sure on that.
I guess my question is, forget this for a second. If there was a $50,000 true-up amount that would be coming the MUD's way, would that $50,000 not go into reserves?
Yes, it goes in the cash balance.
Okay, that's what I, guess what I was getting at. So, whether we use what's in the reserves or the true-up, it comes out of there. At the end of the day, when it washes out, it's all gonna wash out of the reserves.
My, my point was, I didn't want to count on the true-up. I wanted to find out what, what the reserve status was.
And that, that was the intent, is if you go ahead and allocate it from reserves now, then you don't have to worry about the true-up portion of it, or waiting till the end of next year. As, as of right now, being a quarter into the fiscal year, we're projecting about $600,000. Will be in the cash balance remaining.
Yeah.
And $450,000 roughly is our operating funds that we have to leave. So, you have $150,000 plus dollars available for spending right now.
Chief, on this security system, you, you can run a report on who has accessed certain doors at certain times, correct?
Yes, sir.
This system, you can do it from home, so you don't have to come to work anymore?
I wish, no, sir. I have to be at work to do my job, so.
But you can virtually access it?
Yes.
It is an online platform.
It is an, oh, yeah, it is an online platform.
When a truck rolls out, you can make sure everything's locked down?
Yes, sir.
Stuff, okay.
I have the ability to see that, absolutely.
I've seen several times when trucks roll out, the doors are wide open. Anyone can go through there?
We've been working on that. They're getting better with that, but they get in a hurry, especially on very structured fires or things of that nature when they bail out. But really, that's a point of emphasis for us to keep those doors shut.
And part of this system will, will allow the chief, so if someone does leave a door open, the entryways into his narcotics rooms or his actual building access will be better secured. So, that way, for some reason, the doors are open.
I've got security on my house, and it's like Fort Knox.
For your narc, for your narcotics room, or just in general?
I don't take medicine.
Okay, somebody want to entertain a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve proposal by DAC Incorporated for replacement of security system at all fire station entry points for an amount not to exceed $21,061.31, funds coming out of reserves, and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary contract documents.
I'll second it.
Go ahead and second, and then-
Yeah, I'll second it, but there is a comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna see if we could, you know, ask the town. If they don't, we've already approved it, so if they can contribute to any of it, it'd be beneficial.
Go ahead and amend the motion.
Yeah, I just want you to amend it to seek funding, any possible funding from the town towards the security based on their EMS equipment.
I'll second the amendment.
So, the amended motion is what Bill read with the caveat that we will seek possible funding from the Town of Trophy Club?
Coordinate with the town to determine if additional alternate funding may be available through their sources.
Okay, so how procedurally, Alan, will that take place?
We vote on amendment first, is that right?
Yeah, we vote on the amendment first.
I do have a comment to Mr. Rose's motion. There's the, limiting it to the $21,061.32, that's not the final figure. Because there's a caveat there that tax is not included, so you can't cap it. There's a little star there saying that-
This is, that would be the total amount. We are tax-exempt, so we wouldn't have to pay any taxes on that.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure-
That, that is the amount, yes, sir.
There's a little caveat there that-
The not to exceed-
Come back and light us.
Okay.
We vote on the amendment.
We have, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Everybody understand the amendment, Kevin? All those in favor? It is approved.
Amendment is-
Let's go back to the original motion, okay? You want to read that again, Bill, for the original motion?
Well, it would be as amended.
As amended?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the original motion that Bill read as amended that we just approved.
Yep, right, with funding coming out of the reserves.
Funding coming out of the reserves with the caveat that we talked about, okay? All right, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Item six, consider and take appropriate action to approve matters related to the May 7th, 2020 general election. A adopt order number 2022-000117A, as in Alpha, calling the May 7th, 70 election, general election. Bill, you're waving at me?
Yeah, actually, when you go back into the document, you'll find that that's a typo. It's 2022-0119A.
Hey, let me reread that. Adopt order number 2022-0019Alpha, calling the May 7th, 2022 election, general election. Prove notice of appointment of agent. Authorize general manager to sign and execute all necessary documents relating to the election. Prove joint election agreement and election services agreements. And lastly, E, authorize other necessary actions as may be necessary or convenient for the conducting of the May 7th general election. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay, Bill?
I move to approve the matters related to the May 7th, 2022 general election. As, as Red specifically pointing out, that the order number is 2022-0119A.
Second, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Kevin seconds. Items A through E with the one caveat that Bill changed. All those in favor? It is unanimous. All right, item seven, items for future agendas, future agenda items. What do you have, thoughts, comments? Okay, the next meeting is set for February 21st, 2022 at 6:30, which is our normal meeting.
22nd.
Say that again?
We have an issue with that day.
It's the 22nd according to calendar in the document.
February 22nd is what is currently scheduled, and we will be here that day. And that's the, that's the day of early voting, so there is a potential. We're gonna, we were talking about leaving that scheduled at 6:30, but there is a potential that we have to delay the start of that meeting due to election staff closing up and exiting the room before we can enter. I will say this as well, unless something significant comes up, right now, it's not looking like we'll have enough information for you all to hold a board meeting, so there is a potential that this meeting gets canceled for next month. So, I just want to make you all aware of that now. Right now, I don't have anything pressing that I'm gonna need approved or to discuss, so I just want to let you all know it could get canceled.
A little in favor of scheduling the canceled meeting? But, but I want to be clear here, that the regularly scheduled meeting is the 21st, correct?
No, so I put it on here just so it was on our regular calendar. It was, yeah, it is, it's set, it typically would be on the 21st. We have not discussed that yet in a board meeting, say it is on the 21st. Typically, I bring that back every month. However, there will not be anybody here that day, it is a holiday.
That's why we, that's why we changed the date.
Additionally, there is early voting, and that week it is 7 to 7. And it is the Republican primary. It will likely be 7:45 before, I mean, you have to guess at the time. But with the primaries, it works a little bit differently. It might take them a little longer to close up shop. And so, by the time we would get everything set up in here, it might be 8 o'clock before we can start the meeting.
Make a motion, cancel.
Well, I, I make a motion to cancel. I mean, unless there's something that comes up.
There, there's not anything, again, I'm aware of. I'm not gonna have any documents that are gonna need to be approved or executed next month, so we can go ahead and cancel February's meeting.
All right, got that, Lori? Just gave you a day back, there you go.
Tony won't have to make that drive.
Yeah. All right, that is it. It is 7:05, and we are adjourned.